I see we're being recorded tonight. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Hold in favor, aye?
Aye.
What was the name? End of the agenda?
Okay, we've got some personnel items, I included it in your summary in your packets, okay? Mrs. Baxter and the elementary school staff will present at the meeting. Student recognition, we're going to recognize the scholastic team, girls and boys track, girls soccer, and our students of the month. And then personnel, I've got a lot of personnel items. On your agenda, the revised agenda, you'll notice in red some of the changes that we've added. Okay, so, Dr. Paulnick, do you want to talk about the kindergarten enrollments?
You had approved that we were in elementary positions. Most of the schools, along the trails right now is 104 students, we had only scheduled four sections for them. Probably going to use one of the people that we have to fill that, otherwise it would be at 26 students already. Otherwise, we're waiting a little bit for a few more students at the elementary school. Oxable just doesn't have many kids at this particular point. This year they have 138 that were attributed to their school, but we only have about eight that have registered at this point. So we're probably going to just move one of those teachers to there, but we're still realizing if they come up with 138, we may at some point need one additional kindergarten teacher, but we're going to look at the numbers and we're fine by it at this particular point, but we want to get, we're shooting for that 24 and kind of walk along whatever numbers for kindergarten. So, aside from that, we would have probably, like, find three or four more to fill and that would be it. And then this week, just so you know, next week also, we're going to be interviewing for the binary positions as well, so hopefully the board meeting will have that for you as well. Traditionally, we get a percentage increase in registrations here. Late, last year at Oxables, for example, we come together last 30 days, we probably have 35 or 40 kids. Sometimes we don't even know until August, mid-August, so that's why we're trying to keep a close number so that we can keep you updated. So if there's the possibility that it's like, we have a chance to do something. But we do have, we have another registration day scheduled for June 17, which we're also going to screen potential kindergarten students. So we've gotten that word out through the district newsletter, it's on the website. We've sent flyers home to the schools too, so I'm hoping that somehow we'll be able to entice some of the other parents to come in a little sooner to register their students.
There's also a mass registration scheduled for July 8 as well. And then we have, when I wrote the agenda, we didn't have any resignations, but we had those names in red there. And then, under retirements, we have two teachers retiring. One will retire this year, and the other will retire in 2018. And I just want you to give you, I want to give you a little quick warning, we have a couple of other teachers who've already acquired or sent letters and we see them today. So, 31st is right around the corner, so they have to have their letters in by 31st. So, we think there's going to be at least three more. So, that's what we have for retirements.
That's a four.
Every one of those, yeah. Then, employment, we have a few people listed here, and then there were some that weren't listed in your, at your table clipped with that clip, back end of stuff. Do you have the employment recommendations that are there, as well as the letters of resignation and things of that nature? And any retirement letters we had as well? We didn't have any when we sent out the packet. The, under employment, we also have the kindergarten teachers that we're adding. We did move several teachers from other positions into some of the kindergarten roles, and so we need to fill those other teaching positions. These are kindergarten teachers, you'll see, we have two technology associates, one at Long Trails, the technology associates at Long Trails left the job, lost the money. And then, the MIS position is to fill the position that was vacated by Freeman, who moved up to network manager. And, Special Education Staff, Kimberly Schmidt, Amanda McLeary, and Angela Holmes. These are the spec, some of the special ed staff, Tiffany and Sherwood, that's important to prove. None of these are new, they're things that everybody knows about. The next thing is compensation, and this is something we've been talking about for quite some time. Actually, the board entertained one of the transportation staff members, and on your, in your packets on page five and six, you'll find basically a summary of how many hours the bus drivers drive, how we pay them, and we're suggesting that we move away from an hourly pay to a per route pay. And it won't increase our costs, it's going to maintain our costs. And I have a summary, if you go into the action items, there's a summary on page three of that, and it kind of, page three, four, three and four. There's a summary that explains, you know, what we're recommending here. And, I met with the transportation director, the transportation director likes this because she's losing, every two weeks she's losing a couple of her staff members for a couple of days, just to go through all these time cards and monitor these bus route times and things of that nature, so. And as I said before in the summary, it was something that the former transportation director had brought the idea of, this concept, in the beginning of the school year, so.
I guess I have two issues with that. One, when I was first on the board, we were doing an hour, or we were doing it by route payment. And we moved to a by route payment, or by hour payment in order to save money. So now we're saying we're going to go back to the old method, but we're still going to save money.
Yep.
Can you explain that, it seems kind of confusing.
You read my summary?
I did.
Well, apparently, some of it you didn't understand, because, because the, when I first arrived here, yeah, we were paying by the route, but drivers were only driving for one hour. That route was a payment for two hours of work, okay? And so the drivers were being paid for two hours, but they were only working for one hour, okay? Because that's what the route pay was, it was, it was basically based on two hours of work. But the drivers would come in, they'd go out, they'd pick up elementary kids, they'd drop them off at the school, and then they were done, they parked the bus. Somebody else would grab that bus and go out and pick up, well, in the morning they'd pick up the five through eight kids, and then in the afternoon, I mean, excuse me, and then, the first run would be the five through eight kids. Then another person would hop on the bus, get paid for two hours to go out, and it'd only take them an hour to go out and pick up the K through four kids and drop them off. So we were paying them for four hours in the morning, but we were only getting two hours of work. So, I logically came to the board, shared the information with the board, and what we did is we made the bus drivers go out and do two runs. But I knew at that point in time that the bus drivers were going to, it's going to take them more than two hours to run their bus routes, because it was taking them a full hour. We've got a 72 square mile school district, okay? And, so, it takes them a full two hours to run their bus, it's going to take them a full two hours to run their buses. They still need time to clean their buses, to do a safety inspection before they go out in the buses, every time they go out in the buses, and they need time to fuel the buses as well. That all gets calculated into their hourly rate, into that, that time. We, and this analysis that I gave you shows that on average, you know, between two hours and 10 minutes and two hours and 15 minutes in the morning, the bus drivers are taking to run their routes. And two hours and 10 minutes and two hours and 15 minutes in the afternoon, they run their routes, fill their buses up, clean their buses, et cetera. That is a lot cheaper than spending, paying for four hours of drivers, paying for two hours and 15 minutes in the morning, instead of paying for four hours. So that's how we save money. But we did it in an effort to be fair to the people, because we knew it was going to take them more than two hours to run their buses, so we changed the hourly rate, we changed to an hourly rate. Well, we've been doing this for quite some time, and what we've found is, we've, we've run into all types of personnel type problems where people are offended because someone's questioning their ethics, whether they're padding their time card or they're not. And it, on almost a bi-weekly basis, we're dealing with some good staff members that have the feelings over things of this nature. So the idea of going back to a per route run, that's how it came, came about. So, does that answer your question?
So we're going to figure that the route is based on two hours and 15 minutes per route?
Yep. And some of the routes will, some drivers will work two hours and 30 minutes, and some drivers will work two hours.
I think we're going to have the same complaints that we had under the previous, under the previous routes. We're trading one problem for another. It's all about, we're going to have the people that are, that are working less are going to, of course, say nothing, but people that are working more than that are going to complain. I just think we have to revisit this issue again, rather than just policing, you know, how much time people are actually spending. I mean, one of, one of the things that I thought was interesting, I guess a couple things that I thought was interesting about this summer. One, it seems to disparage when, about her, you know, her complaints and her reporting possible time padding, but then later says that she was due to be correct.
No, it doesn't say that.
Sure does.
No, it doesn't. It says that there have been very few instances of time padding. There have been a couple of instances of it, I'm not, and I wasn't disparaging her, all I said is these people have accused her of being rude and disrespectful toward her. I'm just reporting facts. That's what other employees have accused her of. And so, there have been a number of instances, and that's what I meant when I said that there are a lot of staff members that every, every two weeks, you know, their credibility, they feel like their credibility's being attacked. And so, and so, that's, that's the issue, you know, her responsibility is to monitor those things, okay? And what we did to try to resolve the issue was, we said, we need to turn that in to the transportation director, and, and let the transportation director handle it. But, these issues would come up from time to time anyway.
Okay, but, one of the statements here, it says that we resolved the monitors' start and end time to the bus video log on the bus cameras, and was able to correct a few of the drivers. That suggests to me that, that there wasn't the issue for those time cards. Unless I'm reading it wrong.
You are reading, you're reading more into it than you, than, than it's, than it's written. What, what-
Well, if they weren't wrong, why would he correct them?
No, I'm not saying that there weren't a few of them that were wrong, but there are numerous that are reported, I mean, and most of them are not had. And, and I know this was in front of the board for, this report's been in your packet for three months.
This report?
Yeah, very similar report. I revised it again, you first got it on March 25th.
Well, this summary is, is not in the, the report about-
Yes, you guys, I gave it to you on March 25th. Go dig it up in your, in your board packet. And you had it last month, too. So then, the, the last thing has to do with basically the title of Erin Souza. Erin Souza, and I don't know, I noticed that I do have an error in my summary. When Erin was hired, he was hired to fill a position that Jason Willis was vacating. And Jason Willis was a network manager. A year later, our technology coordinator, not director, well, it says in your, in your packets that she was the director. Our technology coordinator, Marilyn Q., retired, but we never filled the position. Jason's been functioning as both of those positions, um, excuse me, Erin's been functioning as both of those positions ever since. One of the things that Marilyn was, when I arrived here, Marilyn was basically coordinating all activities, like a director would. And, and that may be the reason why I, you know, subconsciously put that in there. The, but Marilyn had done, had done that when we first arrived, and Jason was basically the network manager. He was basically maintaining connections in the school district. Well, Jason's role became larger and larger as time went on, his role became larger and larger, because we became more and more dependent on technology. All the phones in our schools are based on our internet connections and our technology, and they are 100% maintained by our technology staff. All of the technology equipment, we probably had about 1,000 machines in our district back in 2007, and we now have, you know, three possibly, getting, getting higher than, well beyond 3,000 machines in the district as well. And a larger network, a larger bandwidth, a larger, larger ancillary devices, connections, et cetera, that we have had to do. Well, it was brought to my attention that after we hired Freeman as network manager, Erin said, I don't think I was ever named director. And I said, okay, I'll bring it up at the next board meeting. So, that's what I, so that's, that's what I'm trying to correct, I'm trying to correct him being named, you know, what he's been doing, he's been the director of IT in our district, so. And we did have a job description in our job description manual, we're a director of IT, so. The, the other thing is the insurance renewal. In your board packets, you'll find the insurance renewal. We actually renewed the insurance in the, in January. We approved an 18-month bid for insurance with ICRMT, Illinois County Risk Management Trust, the low bidder, okay, at an annual cost of about $318,000, okay? What we have to do is, we have to renew our board li, our board, that was our workers' comp. Yeah, workers' comp, yeah. And, so what we have to do, what expires in, at the end of June, is our board liability package insurance. And the low bidder, we have four bidders. Insurance Program Managers Group was not competitive, so they asked for their bid not to be listed. Hartford called and indicated that their bid, when they found out what the other bids were, they did not submit a bid. Liberty Mutual, which is our current carrier, theirs was 195-827, and Selective, the low bidder, is 179-781. And so I'm recommending that the board approve Selective for our insurance renewal.
Question, what's your opinion, Larry?
You know, um-
So you click this to open up that order?
You know, to be honest, I, I knew it one time, but I don't remember right now, I don't, I don't remember. So I, Doug's explanation is, sounds good to me.
Is there a question?
So, that's what I've got there. What I have is, I have for you bus bids. The bus bids came in after the board packet went out, so I have them here. And, you take the, the bid comparison form, it's on the back side of that sheet that I just passed out to you. We have four companies, excuse me, three companies submit bids. Midwest Transit, Midwest Bus Sale, and Central States. We got bus bids for propane buses, and one bidder did an alternate bid for a diesel engine bus. It's a 2015. The others are 2016. The low bidder is Central States for a 2016 propane bus. The low bid price is $93,149. If you recall, and that's what I tried to explain in the summary, it's on the other side. If you recall, the federal government is, has provided grant funding to municipalities that are converting their fleets over to non-fossil fuels, oh, we all, I guess, fuels that aren't in as great a demand, I guess, if there's a better word for it. And propane is one of those fuels. In fact, last year the district received $54,000 in a grant reimbursement for buses that we bought in the prior year that, you know, equaled about 93,000, these buses that we listed at. So I believe we paid about $90,000 or $91,000. We got about $54,000 or $18,000 per bus reimbursement. It's basically 20% of the cost. And that grant is still being funded at this point in time, the federal government has not shut that grant down, so we'll submit that grant again, the transportation director will. And hopefully we can, we can get that. In addition to it, one of the reasons why we're converting to a propane fuel is because propane-powered buses cost less to operate. They cost less to operate because propane costs less money per gallon. And even, even though a diesel, diesel fuel, you get more miles per gallon in diesel fuel than you do propane. A bus is getting about six miles to the gallon for, with diesel fuel, and you're getting about four miles to the gallon with propane, four and a half miles to the gallon. But even with that, the discrepancy between the price of diesel fuel and propane gas saves the district about $1,500 in operating costs, on fuel costs alone, per year. And our transportation director did an analysis, provided it to the board after we bought our first set of diesel buses, and it almost matched, it was almost like an identical match to the information that I provided the board prior to moving towards the purchase of a propane-powered bus. And, the second thing that you save money on is your maintenance costs. For example, I don't know the exact number, because I'm not a mechanic, but the filter for a diesel engine is like five times the cost of the filter, of the oil filters for a propane bus. A propane bus takes six quarts of oil, a diesel, I think, takes 28 quarts of oil, okay? So when you're changing the oil on these buses, you're changing a lot of oil with the diesel engines. Not only that, with a diesel engine vehicle, they have something called a turbo, and if somebody asked me to point to the turbo, I wouldn't know what the turbo was, okay? But there's something that's called a turbo on a diesel engine. And, that turbo goes out every other year, basically, by how, based on how hard we run our buses. Those turbos cost about $2,000 to replace. You don't have a turbo to deal with, with a propane bus. Everything from, you know, tune-ups to, you know, those types of things, it's much less expensive with a propane vehicle. So, we're saving around $2,000 per bus annually in operational costs. In addition to that, we're also saving additional money, and I tried to explain it in this. There is a federal grant, and it's ba, basically, we're, even though we're not paying a federal excise tax for propane fuel, the federal government, to encourage the use of propane-powered vehicles, is offering schools and municipalities reimbursement of 50 cents a gallon on propane. And when we're buying it at about $1.50 a gallon, that puts the price of propane fuel at about $1 a gallon, which is even, even more of a savings. So, I, I believe that, it was a year or two ago, I, I shared with you, I didn't include it in the packet this time, but I shared with you that with the 50 cents per gallon rebate, we're saving somewhere between $2,500 and $3,000 per bus. And, on fuel costs, maintenance costs, et cetera. So it's going to be my recommendation to approve the purchase of three new 2016 propane-powered buses from the low bidder, which is Central State Bus, and that's who we've been buying the buses from recently. Okay, kindergarten iPad bids, okay? Erin's in the back, back there, at least we were.
Just walked out.
Just walked out. We, we have some technology purchases with- We, we have some technology purchases with the new full-day kindergarten program. The kindergarten teachers, along with Dr. Polnick, have had a bit of a change in the way they want to implement kindergarten curriculum. And want to use the iPad technology much more often. And so what we have is we have a cost of about forty thousand dollars for iPads. There's going to be, it'll cost us in total about forty-five thousand dollars. But it's about forty thousand dollars for the iPads themselves, and then, I think, thirty-eight in total. And there's, there's another, about five thousand dollars to purchase the apps that they're using for kindergarten, for the kindergarten curriculum. And so they can be used in all the classrooms.
So I have two questions about that. What are they going to be used for? What, what kind of apps are they going to be?
Reading and math. All right, there are some art things and whatnot. If you could do a response, like this, that we need this year for those? Is reading and math, different types? There will be five, most of the teachers say. That's what this covers.
Let's just assume for a minute that, that I'm okay with iPad and their classroom. Why iPads, they're the most expensive tablet?
True, but they're more student-friendly for somebody with a napkin as well. They don't have the technology, they probably won't have that capability.
Oh, I'm not talking about, oh, look, I mean, another tablet. You know, iPads are at least three times more expensive than any of the other tablets out there.
We piloted, as you recall, two classrooms with ten each this year. And the results have gotten for parents and kids. I mean, they really, they use them a lot. It's so student-friendly, so user-friendly for the kids that to us, if that's where we're going to go, we would want to stay with iPads, K-1, too, conceivably, because it's most user-friendly and useful for them. The apps that are there have so much more greater end opportunity and variety of apps. And we've done that, that's close to some of them. I am looking at every other individual by itself. That's our decision.
Okay, but the other sort of issue in my mind is that wants to go down this road, sort of where Apple brought it.
So until they come up with something that'll work on both platforms.
So the initial outlay is forty thousand dollars. But then there's going to be more and more outlays in the future, and they're always going to be. Then the, then the argument is, if you have bought Apple, you've bought Apple to test.
Again, until you get one that maybe can do a cross-platform, you wait. But yeah, probably that, I'm not going to disagree with you because probably a K-1, yeah, iPad would be more beneficial for students and easier to use.
Well, a lot of the apps that are being used in app, working through the nexus, working with these other items as well. So I don't know.
Well, yeah, I guess that.
Yeah, but it's.
Well, and that's one hundred. And if that's true, why, I mean, in my mind, one tablet is interchangeable with any other unless you're using an Apple-specific application. And then the issue is, then you get what it's Apple. Right, I mean, one of the reasons this stood out for me was I just bought a bunch of tablets for a company, and I looked at the Apple product, and it was about three times as expensive compared to Samsung tablet, and they were even cheaper.
So they made it out there.
Now, those are different platforms.
Yeah.
But.
I want to take that idea. That's, we went with that, I guess, based on the pie, the apples that we had and played, kids really liked it, the parent group on really good. The apps were really good, and there was a more, a larger variety of apps available as well. Aaron, have, did we look at any of the other, you know, we were, we were talking about Apples versus any other?
Yeah, you can make the case, potentially, to go after a bunch of Galaxy Tabs or something. But when you're sitting down with teachers and looking for educational apps, the Apple Store seems to have, like, still like a slight edge over, like, that market. For other kind of, quote, professional apps, or, or popular social media apps, it's kind of like an easy draw. But it seems like when you're looking for some type of funx game that really is there, it seems like, from what I've seen, a lot of developers start with making the Apple version, and then they come around, then they, it takes off, then they make like the Google version. So is there a huge discrepancy? No. But it seems like when we're looking for apps to try and go after, it seems like the Apple Store is just a little bit, a little bit better at that side of it.
Good, but if we, we're, just in terms of making dollars go farther, if you take forty thousand dollars and spend it on Apple products, we get X. If we take forty thousand dollars and spend it on, and I'm not saying it's Samsung or LG or whatever, but a competitor's product, it's three or four X.
Yeah, but if you don't have the apps to work with at this point in time, is I think what he said, what I heard him say, is I heard him say that the iPads, the Apple product, has the applications right now that haven't yet been developed. They eventually will be, to be applied elsewhere. So if, in fact, it's.
Well, that's why I asked.
If it's developed over time, you're not married to the Apple, because you're going to have the other app that you can go to, it's just not visible at this point in time. It's not available.
Well, are, are, then that's why I asked the question. Are the apps we're using solely available for Apple products?
We'd have, we'd have to kind of go through that by app, to be honest. When we were looking at it a year and a half ago, on the different stores, the ones that we wanted to try immediately were just more easily there on the Apple side. So there was, so when you typed in, like, kindergarten, first grade funx on the Apple Store, let's say there was like eight different apps that fit that bill. On the Google Store, back then, it was like two or three. And now I think that gap is closed. I don't, I don't know about the, you know, so an iPad Air One, which is the, what we would actually be purchasing if we do this, we're getting them for about three eighty apiece. Now, that's the nine-and-a-half, almost ten-inch screen. I mean, the, the Galaxy or whatever, unless you go significantly smaller, the cost differential's going to be similar, I think. I don't think they're selling like a three hundred dollar iPad One Air killer. All right, the biggest thing, honestly.
The school would give a better discount than I would. But when I compared the two, it was five hundred dollars, five hundred twenty-nine dollars for the Air, and two twenty-nine for the Galaxy.
Well, we're getting.
And it was a hundred dollars for the LG model. And that's just based on the prices that I can get.
Yeah.
Schools, I would, I would think, because you're purchasing more and you go into the educational market, can get a better discount.
Well, yeah, I mean, our, I think you got the quote for that bidder, too, at five twenty-nine, whatever it is. And the, the Air One is what we would go, and that's, that's three eighty with educational discount. It's not much from Apple unless you buy like twenty thousand napkin packets. I mean, I would be hesitant to go after something, you know, like the hundred and hundred and fifty-dollar range, just because, like, well, how'd they get there? You know, slower CPU, less memory, blah, blah, blah. We could, I mean, we could benchmark them and, and do all that. I mean, we can reinvest.
Well, what, what kind of apps are you, I mean, how much power do you need to run an educational app?
Well, some of them are, you know, they, some seem to do quite, quite lit. I mean, they're, they're not a three-D game, per se. But, I don't know, I mean, we could potentially get a couple in comparison and with the teachers that have been using them all year and go side by side.
I mean, I know it's, it's easy to say I'm on Apple. It's easy, right? But if you're going to spend that kind of money, you want to make it go farther, or spend less and get the same.
Yeah.
Get the same thing.
And to be honest, me personally, I mean, I don't have big, I'm not really married essentially to Apple or Samsung or whatever. I kind of, when we were looking at both, it was more, let's find the apps that you want to do, and we found a lot more at the, you know, timeline view. So then we already have a year's worth of teachers using them successfully, and these are the apps we want, and these are the apps we want you to purchase if you do this rollout. Now, do all of them match? You know, for time, we could, we could easily reinvestigate that.
Well, no, and I know it's easy to say, look, it's forty thousand dollars, but it's forty thousand dollars this year, forty thousand dollars next year, forty thousand dollars, or whatever the number is. And if every time you're spending more money on one product than another, right, it, it might seem like a small savings now, but over the course of five, ten years, it gets very large. And you're going to have, you're going to have tablets that break. They need to be replaced, it's going to break them. They need to be replaced. And every time you do that, you're going to be at the higher price point.
Yeah, we could, we could definitely get, you know, you know, a very comparable, because the problem, to me, that's one of the problems with Samsung is they've got so many models now.
Well, I'm not, I just threw that out there.
Yeah, I know.
That's, that's the purchase decision that I made. That's, there's plenty of tablets out there.
Yeah, well, I mean, we could, we could get in, you know, in a Google side of the equation, a non-Apple tablet, and just see, here's, you know, we have a list of five, got to have apps essential from kindergarten teachers, another ten. It'd be nice to be having by Christmas or whatever their deadline was. And we can see how many of those actually match up now, and then come back to you. Either way.
I don't know what your kindergarten pilot was, but just special ed-wise, when we did the school buy-in where staff was allowed to buy an iPad, I bought one and I use it sometimes in my social work groups. And teacher-wise, I don't know what's out there. But social work-wise, there's usually even less apps. But I was actually able to find apps and do like social skills and friendship groups and stuff like that, that was really interactive with the groups and with the kids. And again, the kids are super familiar with either using their iPads or whatever, but it was very easy for them, you know, like, no training from me on how to use the iPad and stuff. So it was very friendly. And again, I was able to access social work stuff, which is even way more limited than that. And I know the special ed team, there's a lot of speech OT and other specialized services where they have been using theirs as well. And on that, I hope we're doing heavy sturdy cases, because sometimes the kids are.
Yeah, we, we, like, there are five layers of different cases, so. Bumps, bruises, and stains, that's the kind of thing.
Spanish textbook adoption. Dr. Polnick has a summary, a recommendation for Spanish textbook adoption. It's basically an eighteen thousand dollar adoption. The Spanish textbooks are out?
I've got created them. You can't even get them anymore on even eBay. So it's the first time I've bought them since I've been. Yeah. That's just a long time ago. Just simply. And the teacher took them all, you have people come in that like what they draft, the essay, so you say is very interactive, very friendly, lots of things online for the teachers. The homework, it is a nice go-along that with the digits. I don't see it just technology-wise, you must be able to send in assignments, that kind of stuff. So about eighteen thousand, we would probably take two thousand of that out of one of the grants, so I don't know. Cost about eighteen thousand out of the general cost, cover the cost of that. That is about two hundred, seventy, almost about seventy-some dollars apiece. This is going to be used in future kids' English, Spanish. Spanish, in search of Spanish classes at seventh and eighth grade. We have a round of two hundred some kids in the, in the, in the. Well, we had Spanish in junior high, but. So basically, the English-speaking kids learn Spanish from these books. So it's basically a language, quite actually. It is a language, but they, they learn, they're, they're learning Spanish technically. They're learning, I guess, more like, okay, understand, I'm sorry.
Now, the textbook, just so everybody knows, this, this expense is paid for, basically, by the parents. It's paid for with our textbook fees. The textbook fees, we try to pay for the cost of the textbook over five years. We take one-fifth of the cost of, you know, so the seventy-dollar textbook here for fourteen, fourteen dollars a year. So, so a part of the textbook fees for seventh and eighth graders would be this fourteen dollars. So the, um, the board meeting dates, you'll find in your packet on page twenty. You'll see July, we try to stick to the fourth Wednesday of each month, okay? And there's a couple of instances where it's not the fourth Wednesday. And one of those instances is September thirtieth, okay? And the reason why the board being scheduled for September thirtieth is because the August twenty-sixth meeting needs to be thirty days prior to your September meeting. And so if we would have had it at September twenty-third, which is the fourth Wednesday, then we wouldn't have that thirty days notice. So we've got that in there. November eighteenth is, is the board meeting, because of Thanksgiving the following week. December sixteenth is the board meeting, and Christmas the following week. And I think the rest of them are the fourth Wednesday. The, uh, and the Morris CoGen PTAB settlement agreement. At this time, I still do not have it. Actually, our attorney is out of the country, as a matter of fact. And so on this case, he called me up from a foreign land and basically explained that he would, he'd prefer to work on this, and they'll be back in town on Thursday tomorrow. And so I should have a copy of this written. I'll send it out to you so you have a copy of it, and you can digest it. Any questions you may have, feel free to contact me. And, and then it'll need to be approved at our June board meeting. No action tonight on that. And then, decision to close, let's see. Oh, yeah, oh, excuse me. Then to Board of Education, the school board's search?
I got a call from Dave Love, and he said we have, at this time, we have forty-two applicants for superintendent position. They will be reviewing those and cutting it down to viable candidates. And then we'll be working on that. He just left me know tonight that he asked if we can work on that.
Did he share the participation of that survey or anything, or where we're at with that, as far as numbers? Or are we going to send out something?
He's not sharing any of that with me at this point, though.
Last month, there are.
Wait, can I, can I make a quick point on that? Doug, I, I just started to read your blog, and to say that it's, I don't know what to say about it, but my concern is we're not going to get. Well, it's a profession, you're having an agenda, and obviously, your agenda worked. I'm thinking that any board member, or any potential candidate who would do any due diligence on Manuka and bring that up, why would they want to be superintendent? I just, it just, why would they want to bring their family in? I mean, I'm not sure what L. went through, but I can imagine what his wife and kids went through, going to the store, or the library, or the church, and reading what they read about the guy, if he's right or wrong. But why would a candidate want to, why would an eighteen candidate want to put their name here? And six months, you decide you like this guy or this guy, and you do the same thing over again? I just, it just doesn't make sense. It's just, and the thing is, it's.
Well, maybe you meant, you read my blog, but you didn't read it closely. Okay, nothing I put in there was done or off the cuff. I thought they were looking at the issue.
You, 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 you liken him to the, to the college of DuPage president. What is that? I, I'm not sure. Yes. You, you liken him to the college of DuPage president. The one who's in the news today, all over for whatever he did. Misappropriation of funds. Read it. I, I read, I, I don't know how.
I wrote it.
If that is not a libel suit waiting to happen.
I wrote it, and it doesn't say that.
Bring it up.
I mean.
Bring it up. I.
I'm not gonna bring it up right now, this is kind of childish, right?
On your part, yeah.
Oh.
Why, why would you write a blog? I'm not sure why not.
We've got forty-two applicants, correct? Evidently, it's not deterring them from applying.
The point is, we could have a hundred and forty-two applicants. The position that we're looking for is, is a very specialized position. We need a superintendent and a business manager. I have heard that there's not that many positions out there, and not too many superintendent positions out there that do both. So again, our, our pool of candidates is, that we're actually looking for, is actually very small. We, like I said, we could have a hundred and forty-two, it doesn't matter. But if we can't find a superintendent and business manager in there who, who's qualified, that would wanna take this job and be subjected to possibly an agenda in six months. I, I don't know why somebody would do this, I, I'm just.
What do you think my agenda was?
Obviously, you, you succeeded, the man's retiring the year.
What do, what do you think my agenda was? Do you think my issues with Mr. Gettichammer were personal or professional?
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I know, I know you think that the issues are.
Doug, I started reading this two weeks ago. I had, my wife and I, we're both astounded, astounded by what you said. And I gotta believe any candidate out there, he's gonna be thinking the same thing. What am I gonna get into, what am I gonna put my family through?
Let me ask you this, when this board voted to reelect Mr. Gettichammer, was it a one to five vote, or was it six?
I have no idea. And I.
It was six to nothing, so obviously, unless I had six votes, the rest of this board agreed with me.
And, and I'm not sure if L is guilty or not. The point is, why would you put it out there? Just, if people wanna know what's going on, they will come here.
Is this a public, is this a public school?
It's, they can come here, they can read in the newspaper.
Is it a public school, yes or no?
So who, I guess, as my mother would say, who's gonna let you boss? Who's the one who decided that?
You know what, if you want to block, you can block. I have a First Amendment right and I'm an elected official.
I'm gonna show you one thing.
Go ahead.
Before anything else, don't ever put my name in your blog, don't ever reference me in your blog. If somebody wants to know how I vote, if somebody wants to know what I'm thinking, they can come to a meeting or they can read in the newspaper. I don't give a shit about your First Amendment rights. I just think that at the end of the day, what you're doing is, is bad for this district. It's absolutely, you're, you're tearing the district apart.
I disagree. I didn't do all those things, all I do is write about what I know.
And, and, and again, we, we.
Sure.
Bring something up and write, and read it, and you tell me that it's a neutral, you're writing as, this is, this is what happened.
I'm, I'm writing as me, obviously, obviously.
And it's very one sided.
Yes, I say in my blog, that is my viewpoint. Okay, we need to move on. Okay, thank you. Don't read those, if you don't like.
Oh, I don't, I'm not going to, I mean, it's trash, I mean, at the end of the day, it's trash.
No reason.
Board convention, interim superintendent, interim superintendent, last month, the board talked about, because I'll be retiring in two weeks. And, um, in the interim, they talked about naming, I believe, as mentioned, Dr. Polnick, as, as the interim superintendent in that, in that time period. And so, but the board may wanna discuss that.
We had some discussion on that, and I think we had a connection to the actual, right?
No, it is on this.
It is on this. So I think we'll probably be taking action on that.
Sure, Paul, can you speak about? No, it would require some type of.
Where, where is it on this?
The action, interim superintendent, I, action item E, A personnel, room number five.
Are we, are you putting the same?
Says interim superintendent.
Oh. Yeah. Mike, sure did.
All right, Student Choice Awards, very, these are awards, oh, I'm sorry, School Board Convention, Lori?
The dates for the conference are November twentieth and twenty-second, and then registration will open entry fifteen, if you're going to try and get a high seat, you know, we're going to what day is it.
All right, Student Choice Awards, I know we've gotta get that down there, we're gonna be late. Um, Student Choice Awards, there's a list of, uh, shortly after I arrived, I thought it was really important to recognize teachers for what they do at our, uh, the biggest event, the school district posts, and that's graduation ceremony. And so we recognize teachers annually at the graduation ceremony, and we have other centers. And, uh, you'll see this year's, uh, Student Choice Award winners are the six teachers named there. Fran Driver, Susan Sheer, Amy Volcheck, Beverly Wines, Steve Rogers, and Michelle Hannigan. They all know that they've been named, so it's not a secret or anything, so if you see them, feel free to pat them on the back. And, uh, so bus route compensation, I, you know, I have this transportation item on there, and the bus bid, we've already gone over both of those things. Uh, the naming of Aaron to the position of Technology Director, he's been doing it, it's just a matter of naming him. The iPad purchase, we've already discussed that, and Aaron has a bunch of summer projects that he's doing. Just in, in the summary, I included what those summer projects were, at least a sampling of what they are. He's got a Manuka two oh one app, so parents can, uh, download a free app on their iPhone or whatever type of smartphone that they've got. They can, uh, download the Manuka two oh one app and they'll get instant messages about things that are happening in the schools, et cetera. I, I've downloaded it and a couple of our principals are already, um, using it regularly. So I'll get, especially Manuka Intermediate Schools, using it constantly. And, uh, so I'm getting messages from Manuka Intermediate School, you know, all the time. Uh, of course, these kindergarten iPad apps, the Google email transition, as you know, the board, uh, acted on, uh, Google email transition. It's going to be a, a bit of a, a challenge for, uh, the computer staff and also our teaching staff, because it's gonna be a change. They were using Outlook for their email service in the past, so it's gonna be slightly different. Aaron's tried to image it and make it seem, uh, to function the same way, but, uh, and of course, he sent out a couple of tutorials that he did. And then he's got a few, uh, equipment purchases as well. And then the last things, operations and maintenance, we've got Transportation Center resurfacing project, which will start on June eighth. And, um, and then building and grounds planning, uh, as you know, last month, we hired Kevin Smith as the successor to Jerry, uh, when Jerry retires. And, um, in the coming weeks, um, Jerry and Kevin are going to try to interview to replace Kevin's position. And, um, they are asking for, and it's a decision the board's gonna need to act on. They are asking for, right now, we have one person in the position. Um, they're asking for a second person. Uh, there's lots of justification of why the second person will be needed, is, uh, maintenance people, uh, to work on our boilers, to work on things of that nature, which that's what Jerry and Kevin do, but they have a hard time keeping up with seven schools and, and all of the different things that are going on in the schools. So, um, I, I have down there a minimum salary, I think that's a little high, it should be somewhere around forty-five bucks. And, uh, and so that's, that's what I have.